I call to order the administrative meeting of the Burnley County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, May 14, 2019. We're going to begin tonight's meeting with a silent invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ken O'Keefe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam County Manager, are there any additions or changes to tonight's agenda?
Madam Chair Commissioners, yes. There's actually two. Item 3A, introduction of Burnley County paid sick leave ordinance to be added to the agenda as item 10D under adoption of ordinance. And then also, item 10B, a project revenue bond for the Thomas Development to be deferred until the next meeting, and a vote is required for the changes.
All right, I move that we make the changes as detailed by the county manager. You have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Piscotti. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That passes unanimously. All right, we're now on to proclamations, and I want to welcome Ken O'Keefe to the podium. This is a proclamation by the county commission recognizing Memorial Day. So I'll read the proclamation, and then if you would, sir, talk about what will be happening on Memorial Day. All right, this is a resolution by the Burnley County Board of Commissioners. Whereas, the first decoration day, now Memorial Day, was observed in 1868 following the American Civil War. And whereas, the men and women we honor on this day have served in all branches of the United States Armed and Uniformed Services. And whereas, these selfless Americans, men and women, have sacrificed for their country in all corners of the globe, succumbing to horrific conditions and hostile enemy action in countless conflicts. And whereas, survivors of our fallen servicemen and women have also suffered greatly. Mothers and fathers, husbands and wives, sons and daughters, fellow servicemen and women, and friends who go on without their loved one striving to heal and find meaning in their tragic loss. And whereas, when an organization of Union veterans, the Grand Army of the Republic, began decorating the graves of Union war dead with flowers, their efforts later merged with those of various Confederate and Union traditions to form the modern holiday which honors all Americans who have died while serving their country. And whereas, in 1971, Memorial Day became an official federal holiday, and numerous celebrations and memorials are held throughout the United States and in Burnley County to remember our fallen heroes. Now therefore be it resolved that the Burnley County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Monday, May 27, 2019 as Memorial Day. To express everlasting gratitude to those selfless men and women in the United States Army Forces, Armed Forces, who have died in the service of our country, to give thanks to their families who have also made great sacrifices, and to urge all county residents to observe this day and give thanks for the freedoms we enjoy because of their service. Down this 14th day of May, 2019, in Burnley County, the state of New Mexico. And this is signed by all five commissioners. And I want to welcome Ken O'Keefe. Thank you for coming to receive this proclamation.
My pleasure.
And can you tell us about the different events in Burnley County that will be celebrating Memorial Day?
Well, the one I'm in charge of, of course, is at the Veterans Memorial, which is on Louisiana Southeast, almost to Gibson. We will start the program with music, patriotic music, at nine o'clock on the 27th. At 10 o'clock, we'll begin the ceremony. We have an interesting collection of guest speakers. We'll hear from Mayor Keller, the newly elected representative for the first congressional district, Deb Hayland, and, or is it Holland? I think it's Holland. And we'll hear from the governor, Michelle Lujan Grisham.
All right, well, again, I want to thank you for all the work you do to organize that event. How many years have you been doing that?
More than I can count.
Well, we're grateful, and it is always a lovely event, and we appreciate all you do to make it happen.
We should have a full house. And I might add that we have overflow parking at the Kirtland Credit Union parking lot, and the City Department of Senior Affairs is providing handicapped vans to transport people back and forth. And we'll have National Guard members help people in and out of cars.
Great. Again, well, thank you for being here. Thank you for your service and all that you do for this community. And if you're willing, we'd love to have you come up, receive this proclamation, and take your picture with us.
It'd be my pleasure. Which way? This way?
County Manager.
Madam Chair Commissioners, it's my privilege to present this acknowledgement for National Public Works Week. And thank you all for joining me here. So I'm just going to read this. So this year's national theme, "It Starts Here," represents the many facets of modern civilization that grow out of the efforts put forth by our public works professionals. So what starts here is infrastructure. It starts with public works. Growth and innovation start with public works. Mobility starts with public works. Security starts with public works. Healthy communities start with public works. So the bottom line is, is that citizens' quality of life starts with public works here in Burnley County. And it starts with the everyday efforts of the 239 men and women of our public works division. So we sincerely want to thank you all, our own public works department professionals, for their steadfast dedication and celebrate their vital contributions to our daily way of life. So thank you all very much. And so that concludes my presentation. And our deputy county manager for public works, I don't think he's going to say anything, are you? You don't, I don't want to put you on the spot, but we just, we...
Too good a crowd.
Okay, all right. So thank you all for everything you do. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we're now on item 5A, Commissioner Piscotti. Do we have some representatives from Lobo Little League here today? We'd like to invite you, first of all, say welcome, and then invite you up to the podium to, while we read the proclamation.
Thank you. This is a certificate of recognition given to Lobo Little League Challenger Division for the outstanding work and dedication of the Challenger Baseball Division players, coaches, volunteers, and supporters in giving every Burnley County child the opportunity to play baseball, and for teaching our community about inclusiveness and increasing awareness and understanding of children with exceptional talents. Lobo Little League is the only little league in the state of New Mexico that hosts Challenger Baseball, an adaptive baseball program for individuals with physical and intellectual challenges. In the Challenger Division, coaches, parents, and volunteers from across Burnley County devote countless hours to giving children with all levels of ability the opportunity to play youth baseball on a real team. The wide range of abilities of Challenger participants allows flexibility in the rules. Each player gets a turn at bat, advances through the bases, and takes a turn in the outfield. Buddies assist Challenger athletes in the areas of batting, base running, and defense, but only as needed. In programs across the United States, the buddy system helps children and adults build lifelong friendships. The Burnley County Board of Commissioners recognizes and thanks Lobo Little League for its commitment to our community and the children who participate in Challenger Baseball, presented this day, May 14, 2019, and signed by all five commissioners.
Thank you very much. This is amazing, really. I want to introduce Ethan Aldridge. He's one of our players. He's a star. And really, it's these two gentlemen, Lee Aldridge and Jim Benkin, they are the coaches. They've been running this program for a long time, and we wouldn't have it without them. Lobo is, you know, thrilled to be able to host them. But really, what I have to say is, if anyone here knows anybody that would like to play, we have a spot. We have a home for you. So, you know, thank you very much for this.
Any other, anyone else would like to speak?
What's your thing?
My name is Joshua Price. I'm the president of Lobo Little League.
And can I just share that a few weeks ago, Madam Chair and I were out to the Little League baseball field, and I have to say, Madam Chair is wicked with that catcher's mitt. But we really enjoyed it. It was just, didn't we look at each other like we have to do a recognition of this team? And I hope that everybody goes and watches and participates in whatever way they can. It was just phenomenal.
Yeah, and I'd like to add my thanks. It was remarkable to come out and participate. Thank you for including us on the field. We got to play a little bit, too. And I just want to thank you for making that possible. And it's, I hope it's clear to everybody here that the Challenger League is open to anybody. You don't have to be in the Lobo Little League District, right? So I know you are coaches from other little leagues. And one thing I would like to just ask our staff, I know we have some of our Parks and Rec staff, we've got our Community Services, DCM, here. Can you help publicize this? Because I think it's clear that there are opportunities for children across Burnley County, kids who want to play baseball. This is an incredibly inclusive program, and so anything that we can do through county government to publicize this and make people aware that their children are welcome to participate in this, I'd just like you to ask you to do that outreach. Joshua, would you be the point of contact for more information?
I would be the point of contact. You can find us at loblittleleague.org. My phone number's right on there. I'm the one that everything comes to, and we would, I would be happy to talk to anybody about the Challenger Division. Thank you for this.
It was really fun to participate, and great to see. All right, if you're willing, we'd love to have you come up, receive this acknowledgement, and so we can take your picture. Madam County Manager.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. It's always my privilege to present the employees of the quarter. This is for the third quarter, so if everyone can kind of join me. Mark, can you come up here and, while I talk a little bit about you? So, all right. I think everybody knows Mark. Most everybody knows who Mark is, so. And what's really cool is, Mark knows everybody, too. I mean, so he does. So Mark joined the county in October of 2015 as my executive officer, and he is now serving as, in the capacity, as my administrative advisor. He helps me on lots of administrative matters. So he, everybody knows he genuinely cares about people in general. He treats everyone with dignity and respect and compassion and sensitivity. He always projects an image of pride and professionalism for the entire county. So when he's not at work, I'm going to tell you a few things that he does. He volunteers in many capacities, and I don't even know how he does it, but he's, he volunteers for organizations such as, he's the incoming chair for the United Way of Central New Mexico Hispano Philanthropic Society, he's an executive leadership team member of the American Heart Association, co-chair for Mothers Against Drunk Driving, honoring heroes, and VIP coordinator for the Hispanic Cultural Center Foundation, Mata Vida Ball, just to name a few. And also, and somehow, he also makes time to pursue his higher education in business administration. And on a personal note, I just want to say, and I've always said, Mark makes me a better county manager, and he makes my job so much easier. So, Mark Chavez. Thank you, Mark.
Hi. How are you?
So Dana joined the county treasurer's office three and a half years ago as an administrative officer three assisting the deputy treasurer. Has been with the budget office for the last year and a half as a budget analyst for public works. She's got strong leadership abilities, looks for methods to improve efficiency, and is extremely self-motivated, and I know that you're very organized, too, as well. So recently developed a template for the team which served a crucial role in the preparation of a major presentation to management. She's married with two children and takes an active role in their extracurricular activities. And also, this past year, she coached her daughter's cheerleading team, which placed first, which first placed first in their division at the Yaffle Cheerleading Competition. So congratulations. That's great.
Thank you.
All right, next, Monique Gonzalez.
I've known Monique a long time.
So Monique began her career with the county 25 years ago. She started as a clerical specialist in the clerk's recording and filing section, and 2012 promoted into current position as a Bureau of Elections Coordinator. Congratulations. Manages three of the many projects associated with the elections, such as early voting, poll site coordination, and Native American voting rights. Also instrumental in the setup of the ADA certification of the mobile voting unit. That's great. Worked closely with the state and disability groups to ensure that the unit would accommodate every voter, and when not at work, she enjoys spending time with her family and traveling. So congratulations and thanks, Monique.
Thank you.
There's her cheering section. George, George Osse from the fire department. All right, George. So George began his career with the county fire and rescue department as a paramedic in 2003. He was promoted as lieutenant in the logistics division five years ago. Coordinates day-to-day logistical needs and works on special projects to include creating specifications for large apparatus, such as the ladder trucks, engines, brush trucks, and rescues, personal protective gear, and other equipment of the trade. He's a strong advocate for safety, so he's, I know that you're continually just providing information to the public, conducts trainings, and just kind of makes sure that people are educated on the safety, the importance of safety in our community, so we appreciate that. Initiated and led the recently implemented Clean Cab Project intended to prevent firefighter exposure to car, what is that?
Carsingens.
Oh, carsingens. And outside work, enjoys hiking, camping, and hunting with his wife, son, daughter, and motorcycle rides with his wife. What kind of motorcycle do you have?
Harley Davidson.
All right, Harley Davidson. So congratulations, George.
Thank you.
I know our county attorney would like to go for a ride with you, George, right? I saw that, yeah. All right, Doreen Garcia.
Hi, Doreen.
So Doreen joined Public Works Division in 2017 as an administrative assistant senior, has the huge responsibility of timekeeping for the division. The heavy snow events this winter provided challenges, and we know that for sure. So she's ensured that all applicable overtime and was ensured that everybody received their applicable, uh, applicable overtime and captured correctly so that the hard-working crews were, who were diligently, diligently to clear out roads were properly compensated. And I want to say, that's, that's a huge job. We had, as everybody knows, you know, we had a few instances where we had snow, lots of snow in the east mountains, right, Commissioner Piscotti? So we want to thank you for that, for your work on that. She also navigated through a complicated case involving an injured employee to ensure that the various applicable types of leave were accurately applied. This is exactly what she enjoys most about her job, is the problem solving and assisting employees in addressing whatever timekeeping issues that they may have. She's originally from California, and she and her husband, Ed, relocated to New Mexico two years ago for the blue skies, sunsets, and the food. And when not at work, she enjoys reading, hiking, and traveling, so we're glad you relocated to New Mexico. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, we have Cynthia, Cindy Baca.
Hello.
Hmm, there's a resemblance here. I'm just trying to figure it out. Julie, okay. So Cindy started at the Public Works Division nearly three years ago after retiring from 22 years in the private sector. Now in, now an accounting assistant to an accounts payable section of procurement and business services department. Among other duties, she has the important task of ensuring that the county's vendors get paid on time. So those of you that are vendors, this is who we thank. So thank you very much. She is a team player who enjoys, who enjoys being busy and continues to accept additional tasks with a smile and professional demeanor. When not at work, she owns and operates a small business with her husband of 38 years. And she also enjoys gardening, redecorating her house each season, and spending time with her three children and her granddaughter. So thank you so much, Cindy, for all your hard work. We appreciate you.
Thanks.
And last but not least, Elaine Piazza?
Yes.
All right, so Elaine works at the MDC, and she joined as a corrections technician 21 years ago after serving eight years in the Army. So she started her career back in 1997 when the old BCDC facility was located downtown and operated by the city. That was a long time ago. Works in the records, booking, visiting property, and visiting property areas. Fondly referred to as the general. I wonder why?
Because of her self-assertive demeanor and ability to quickly identify what is needed
and quickly provide guidance. Thank you. I'm so glad that you do that. We need you. So she loves her job, but she still looks forward to retirement, which is not too, too far away. So an independent and strong Native American woman who loves her family, which includes three children and seven grandchildren, and you enjoy working, excuse me, you enjoy watching boxing, and I know you enjoy working, too. Watching boxing and football, and is a big Dallas Cowboys fan. All right, so thank you so much, Elaine.
Thank you.
So thank you all to our employees of the quarter, and again, it's my honor to present the awards to you, and thank you so much.
We have no board or committee appointments, so we will move on to public comment and communications. We have no communication, so we'll start with public comment. How many people do we have signed up?
We have 27 signed up.
Okay. All right, I'm just going to state our rules for public comment. So here, the county commission meetings, we allow each person signed up for public comment to speak for two minutes. A buzzer will sound after 90 seconds has elapsed, giving you 30 seconds to wrap up your comment. So please, we have a lot of people here to speak, so I want to ask everybody to please stick to the rules. When your time is up, please let the next person come to the podium. So Julie, we'll read the names. When you hear your name called, please come up to the front and get ready to speak.
Karen Brown, Lynn Anderson, Alicia Sines. Again, Karen, McCarny Brown, Lynn Anderson, Alisa Sines, Hilda Gomen- Again, Karen, McCarny Brown, Lynn Anderson, Alicia Sines, Hilda Gomez.
Hi, my name's Karen McCarny Brown, and thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I'm here in support of paid sick leave. I'm a Family Practice Doc for 30 or so years. I worked for 15 years in Carlsbad, New Mexico, and I've worked in the last four years in the South Valley. And I just like to support paid sick leave from sort of the medical perspective. Clearly, individuals that are sick are harming themselves potentially, as well as potentially being able to infect other coworkers and people that they may be taking care of. So allowing people to be able to stay home is a huge benefit. There's also people that have chronic diseases and medical conditions that need regular attention, and if they don't have time to seek that attention, often their care is delayed or not adequate, and they get sicker, and when they do seek attention, often it's in emergency rooms or places that are a lot more expensive to provide care, and they also have conditions or complications of their illnesses that are, you know, more severe. And then I think also just many people are also responsible for parents, members in their family who are disabled, people that need their help to get to medical attention. And by allowing those folks to have sick leave, they can care for their family members and other people they might be responsible for. So I'd really like to support this, and thank you for proposing it.
Good evening Chair Hart Stevins and Commissioners. My name is Lynn Anderson, I'm President of NAAP, the Commercial Real Estate Development Association, and I'm representing tonight many of the associations who helped defeat a somewhat similar bill on a ballot with, which were, a majority of voters in Albuquerque voted against. We were disappointed that we were not able to meet with the county before the bill was introduced, though not exactly the same. There are a number of details in the county bill that were also in the ballot version and were among the reasons for its defeat. We are pleased, at least according to the Journal, that the councilors are willing to meet with the business community and to discuss with us many of our concerns. We're scrambling at the moment to try and alert all of our members and to submit the draft bill to attorneys and human resource consultants for its review and its impact on employers. So one of the things I would like to ask tonight, I understand that this bill can be voted on as early as 30 days in June. I would ask that the councilors at least consider allowing more time for us to get the word out, to let people know what this bill means for them, and have them be able to speak as well if they would like, and also just to prepare for what may or may not be coming in terms of the vote. So thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, and we look forward to meeting with you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I will ask to, ask for additional time for interpretation.
Muy buenas tardes, señora presidenta y miembro de la comisión. Mi nombre es Alicia Sines, soy madre de cuatro hijos, abuela de dos nietas. Soy una orgullosa miembra del Centro de Igualdad y Derechos.
Good morning, sorry, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Alicia Sines. I'm a mother of four children and a grandmother of two. I'm also a proud member of el Centro de Igualdad y Derechos.
Antes de mi retiro, el cual tuve que dejar por una condición médica, yo solía trabajar de conserje en las escuelas públicas de Alburguerque. Tenía entonces solo tres días de descanso al año, que podría usar si me llegaba a enfermar, pero estos días no eran suficientes, que podría usar para llegar a suficientes. Los trabajadores vulnerables, emigrantes, mujeres, personas de color, o con bajos ingresos apenas pueden permitirse perder un día de trabajo.
I used to work as a custodian for APS before I had to retire because of my medical condition. At the time I was working, I only had three days off I could take during the year, which I could use for if I got sick. However, this was never enough for, for example, vulnerable workers, immigrants, women, people of color, or with low wage incomes who can barely afford to lose a day of payment.
Reflexionando sobre las muchas veces que trabajé enferma, o dejé a mis miembros de familia enfermos en casa, porque mis días ya se habían acabado. Los días de pago por enfermedad son cruciales para el bienestar colectivo de las familias trabajadoras.
Reflecting on the many times I worked sick or left sick, family members at home because I ran out of days, paid sick leave days are crucial for the collective well-being of our communities.
Más allá del apoyo a las familias trabajadoras, las evidencias cada vez mayores refuerzan la retórica alarmista de las asociaciones empresariales sobre el colapso económico. Por el cual, por el contrario, iniciativas como el permiso por enfermedad remunerado puede mitigar el volumen de negocios, aumenta la retención de los trabajadores, y en general hacen que nuestra ciudad sea un lugar más saludable para vivir, trabajar. Gracias por su tiempo.
Beyond supporting working families, increasing evidence encounters alarmist rhetoric by businesses associations about economic collapse, to the contrary initiatives such as paid sick leave can mitigate turnover, increase worker retention, and overall make our city a healthier place to live and work. Thank you for your time. I would like to request additional time.
You know, I think tonight, just because we have so many people signed up, could we have it in one language and then submit the translation for the record? Either one. And again, usually we do allow that, it's just with, with so many people to speak, I'd like just to ask your indulgence.
Hola, muy buenas tardes, Comisionados. Mi nombre es Hilda Gomez, y soy parte del Centro de Igualdad y Derechos. Yo llevo 20 años aquí en el Condado, y me he dedicado a limpiar hogares y a cuidar de mi nieto después de la escuela. Hace dos años yo estuve trabajando limpiando unos apartamentos para una compañía en donde yo empecé a padecer de problemas de salud. Estos malestares empezaron a empeorar, pero aún tenía que ir a trabajar para así no perder ni un día pagado de un sueldo al cual viví a cheque a cheque, pero desafortunadamente debido a la falta de un día por no poder descansar y recuperarme, mis problemas de salud empezaron actualmente, y aún padezco de este malestar. Algunas personas como yo optan por trabajar enfermos en lugares, en lugares como restaurantes, tiendas, minorías de construcción, lo que, lo cual es malo para ellos también, es malo para todos los que pueden estar alrededor de estas personas. Casos como el mío son un ejemplo de por qué necesitamos leyes que ayuden a nuestros trabajadores a obtener días pagados por enfermedad. Ningún trabajador debe de poner en salud a la familia en riesgo por temor a no poder solventar el gasto e ir al médico, o perder un sueldo en una ausencia en el trabajo. Nosotros los trabajadores aportamos mucho a nuestras comunidades y merecemos recibir este derecho básico. Gracias por su tiempo y espero apoyar esta ordenanza. Gracias.
Larry Sontag, Isaac De Luna, Martha Gamboa, Greg Fraser.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners, I'm Larry Sontag, representing the New Mexico Business Coalition. And in respect for the number of people you do have signed up, I just want to echo what Lynn Anderson and from NAAP said. New Mexico Business Coalition will be a part of a coalition that has concerns about the health, sick leave ordinance. There's a lot of things that, we're the state affiliate for the National Association of Manufacturers, so we talk to a lot of small and large manufacturers in the state. We would very much like the opportunity to meet with each of you and talk about some of the language that is problematic in the ordinance as it's drafted, and we'll make ourselves available for that. I would also encourage you to not rush the vote in 30 days so that we do have time to get everybody's concerns out on the table. I know that you'll be hearing from a lot of people. Thank you very much.
Isaac De Luna, Martha Gamboa, Greg Fraser, David Penya.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the commission. My name is Isaac De Luna, and I'm here today in support of the paid sick leave ordinance for Bernalillo County. I am the young father of a beautiful six-year-old, and I know firsthand what it is to juggle work and life and family, and most importantly also, understanding the reality of having to deal with unexpected life moments, right, or illnesses from my child that interfere with, many times with my work. And I am extremely lucky that I do have paid sick leave, but I understand that this is not the reality for a big chunk of workers in our county and in our state, and that's why I'm here, right? Because this is, this is a good policy that ensures that the only way that our economy can remain strong and can grow is by making sure that those at the core of it, our workers, are doing okay, and they have the health and the well-being necessary to help us thrive. And so there is no doubt that for New Mexicans, caring for our family is a strong value, right? And for that very reason, it is not fair that our workers are being forced to choose between losing a day's pay or going to work sick because they can't care for themselves and they're scared of losing that wage, right, for that day. And so passing this ordinance is making sure that we put our New Mexican families first, but also it is a way to ensure that our hard-working families have a way to continue thriving. And so today I ask for your support for this ordinance, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. My name is Deonza Valencia, I'm the Advocacy Director for AARP New Mexico. I'm standing in place of Martha Gamboa this evening. As the Advocacy Director of AARP New Mexico, I stand on behalf of our over 260,000 members statewide. AARP is supportive of the proposed sick leave ordinance primarily because of the impact it will have on New Mexico's over 419,000 working family caregivers. AARP research shows that 60% of family caregivers are currently working either full or part-time. These employed family caregivers do double duty by managing their family responsibilities simultaneously with their caregiving obligations. I have my daughter join me tonight, this is her first County Commission Meeting, so I'm starting her young and doing my family caregiving duties. Her name is Miranda Lynn Sapian. As both the workforce and the population ages, more working families will be providing care for elderly parents and will need paid sick days to do so. From the standpoint of our members, the unavailability of paid sick days for such a large segment of New Mexico's working family caregivers not only endangers public health, but also forces family caregivers to choose between caring for their loved ones and economic security. Thank you for your time this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Greg Fraser, and I'm the President of the United Food and Commercial Workers Union, who represent about 3,800 retail workers in New Mexico. Three major employers that many of us shop with here in the county, Smiths, Albertsons, also family-owned John Brooks. I think, let me thank you for bringing this here tonight, and, and thank you for allowing the opportunity for us to speak on this and publicize this and, and vote quick. Workers at Smiths and Albertsons do not have sick pay. They have disability pay, which their employer likes to call sick pay, but that disability pay does not start till the third day, so they're without for the first two days. And then when it does start, it's only $200 for the first week, and if you do the math on that, that's about $28 a day. So the result is, is, is I have a lot of members that have no choice because they are having a tough time making ends meet. In fact, my membership has really changed over the last few years. I have a lot of members that work two jobs now. And they're not working two jobs because they want to, they're working two jobs because they have to. And they're not going to miss a day if they can help it. So the result is they're coming to work sick. And we see it all the time. We see it when we go in and visit with them. They have colds, they're sick to their stomach. It's, it's really, it's really tough because you just don't want somebody sneezing on your cold cuts or coughing on your muffins, or, you know, handling your tomatoes, and, and then they have a stomach bug. Thank you for your time, and thank you for doing this.
Madam Chair, my name is David Penya, Director of Public Policy for the New Mexico Association of Commerce and Industry. And I want to echo the comments of Ms. Anderson, we also have concerns, but we want to thank the sponsors and their staff for their time and effort in drafting this ordinance. However, despite this good faith attempt at addressing one policy concern, multiple unintended consequences have mushroomed as a result. Primarily, we have very serious concerns as to the legal jeopardy the measure would place small businesses in. The civil enforcement provisions are particularly problematic, allows for a private right of action against businesses without the need to exhaust or even try for administrative relief. The most vulnerable would be small businesses, the backbone of our economy, who even if they are right on the letter of the law, may not be able to afford the cost of litigation, especially with the risk of triple damages, court costs, and attorney's fees. Moreover, if the employee or entity brings suit and does not prevail, the businesses not get anything to cover their costs during the process. We believe the proposed structure creates very bad incentives that will encourage unjustified litigation or shake-down lawsuits against small mom-and-pop businesses. There, these are some of the initial concerns based on initial analysis of this measure, but we thank you very much for bringing this measure forward, and we look forward to working with the sponsors and staff on this.
Marian Mencera, Ilse Corrales, Paul Gessink, Dawn Schrader.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the committee. My name is Marian Mencera, I'm an organizer with el Centro de Igualdad y Derechos. We have over 4,700 members, the majority of whom are low-wage workers, and today I'm here to urge you to support paid sick leave for the Bernalillo County. Without paid time off, many of workers have no choice but to set their health and that of their loved one aside to secure payments and stability. Many of el Centro members work in the sectors such as service and hospitality, they are known for not offering this kind of benefits, many of whom are immigrant workers who are trying to come out of poverty by having multiple jobs at once, yet without policies to promote healthy workforce, our families struggle to overcome the cycle of poverty. We are proud to contribute, the many contributions of low-wage workers. Our local government should be serving hard-working families to ensure that they are receiving the basic human rights such as paid sick leave, a right that all hard-working burkeños and members of, of the county of Bernalillo deserve. Taking care of our families is a New Mexican value. No working, no working family who contributes so much to our economy should we have to choose to, between their, their health and that of their loved one and their payments, right? So we call on our commission to stand with all workers to help this country prosper. Because when our workers are okay, and our economy is okay, and we can increase the opportunity to make a state drive. Thank you for your time today, and I hope that in the future we will yes on this ordinance. Thank you.
My name is Ilse Corrales. I'm here to commend the commission on introducing a much-needed paid sick leave ordinance. I'm a third-grade teacher at a Susi Rios Mormon. I teach in a bilingual classroom of 20 students. I support the bill because everybody, or parents deserve to take time off to take care of their children or even grandchildren without losing pay. It's especially true with, when working with students that come from like one-parent households. Often when children come to school sick, it causes a ripple effect. Getting other children sick, teachers sick... Getting other children sick, teachers sick, and when teachers are sick, students lose the opportunity of us teaching them when a substitute comes in. Yeah, they lose their opportunity to learn. Thank you for bringing the, this important issue to the county. When the time comes, I strongly urge you to vote to, to support paid sick leave for our community and our children.
Paul Gessing, Dawn Schrader, J.D. Bullington, Michaela Gallegos.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Paul Gessing, President of the Rio Grande Foundation, which, as a nonprofit, would be impacted by this mandatory paid sick leave ordinance, which we oppose. But as many nonprofits do, we don't have a lot of rules and regulations internally organized, so we would have to spend considerable time just to create a full suite of regulations involving paid sick leave. In the past, we've simply allowed our employees to take sick leave as they need it, and that has never been a problem. Now, we'll have to go and sit down with teams of human resources specialists to come up with a policy. I also have three daughters, so I understand what parenthood is like and dealing with sick children. It can be a challenge. So, neither side has monopoly on having children and dealing with these kinds of issues. I too have concerns about the provision that allows employer, employees with grievances to directly go to court and that they can, can incur significant expenses on employers and that that will be a major stumbling block, especially given everything else that's been going on at the city, the state, and the county with relating to economic policy. I urge you to not go through with this particular sick leave provision. Thank you.
If we humans do not make huge changes in how we live, we will totally destroy up to 1 million kinds of plants and animals. If we humans all suddenly vanished, the other animals and plants would benefit greatly. If all other animals and plants suddenly vanished, we humans would all die. We need them. They do not need us. We totally depend on them. The American dream of big house, fancy car, many high-tech gadgets, flying thousands of miles to vacation, eating meat and dairy is a nightmare disaster for life on earth. Will young people 50 years from now curse us today for being too blind, too lazy, too spoiled, too stubborn, too selfish to wake up and make huge changes? Regardless of what other people do, I am responsible for how I travel, what I buy, what I eat, how I poison the earth. We all, we all stand on the edge of the cliff. Progress means stepping backward to enjoy a much simpler, much healthier life. I also strongly support asylum seekers and undocumented sisters and brothers.
J.D. Bullington, Michaela Gallegos, John Trujillo, Ginger Coning.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is J.D. Bullington and I am here speaking on behalf of the Greater Albuquerque Chamber of Commerce this evening. I'm going to address the proposed plastic ban and paid sick leave ordinance. And first of all, as always, the Chamber greatly appreciates the time and your efforts that you dedicate to a public service. Thank you. Based on the number of outspoken businesses at a previous city council meeting regarding a ban on the distribution of plastic items, it's clear that this measure will cause certain business costs to rise for those establishments that rely on these products. And we know that almost always, those higher costs are passed on to consumers. The Chamber of Commerce believes it would be prudent to pursue a more customized approach that takes into account some local factors like our unique geographical considerations. Other cities and states have taken aggressive actions that rely on voluntary mechanisms and have less onerous measures. It should be noted that paper bags are 10 times heavier than plastic bags, and since these items are destined for a landfill, the resulting increase in carbon emissions is a significant environmental consideration. With respect to the proposed sick leave ordinance, the voters in this county have already spoken on this matter, and like the Greater Albuquerque Chamber of Commerce, they opposed it. The Chamber still respectfully opposes this measure because when businesses have to make difficult compliance decisions to offset the operational cost increases, people can be hurt by the very initiative that is designed to help them. And lastly, I'd like to add that well-intentioned proposals like these, like these two initiatives, can have a pronounced negative cumulative effect on businesses. The operational burdens can really stack up, and some businesses who can't handle the burden have to either lay off employees or worse, not hire employees, or even worse, close their doors. And then, Madam Chair, no one wins. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Michaela Gallegos. I live here in Albuquerque and I'm a member of New Mexico Working Families. I tend to work, talk quickly, so before I forget, I want to ask that you please do not delay the vote on the paid sick leave and give you my extreme thanks for introducing it. I'm a single parent. I work full-time. I do have paid sick leave with this employer. I've also worked second jobs as retail where I did not have sick leave. I really appreciate the inclusion that the employee is not responsible for finding a replacement. There is nothing like being on, feeling like you're on your deathbed and texting and calling everybody you can think of to try to cover your shift because your boss will not let you come in unless you find someone else to take your shift. It's an undue burden to someone who's already suffering. I also appreciate the inclusion of the broad definition of family. I am a single parent. I rely heavily on my mother, who's in her 70s. Last summer, she had two knee, back-to-back knee replacements. Because of my work schedule, I was able to take her to her physical therapy twice a week for, it seemed like, six months. We were going to PT. If I did not have that flexibility and I could not put that PTO slash sick leave on my time card, I would be incredibly stressed. Each appointment was roughly two hours, so that's two hours that I was not able to earn money to take care of my family. I, in my employment, I am responsible for updating our employee handbook, including our paid sick leave policy. We decided to offer paid sick leave because in our profession, we could not compete and attract the talent that we needed until we offered something that was comparable to both the industry and other large cities. So, I do appreciate it and again, thank you very much.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Jonathan Trujillo. I'm currently looking for work after, after having worked as a grounds employee for the libraries for about a year. I did not have sick leave or any other kinds of leave while I worked there, accrued or otherwise. When I got sick, I didn't get paid and that was pretty much the end of the story. I was barely making just over minimum wage, so taking a day without pay was not an option, really. I just had to work sick. If I had the ability to take time off, I would have recovered quicker and been more productive. Paid sick leave benefits the economy and is especially important to families with small children. Just makes sense. I want to thank the Commissioners who are introducing this and urge the rest to support this paid sick leave legislation that would benefit families and workers like myself. Thank you.
Ginger Coning, Gwen Kaitis, Michael Reif, Derek Toledo.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you. I am Ginger Coning. I'm a physical education teacher at Barcelona Elementary School in the South Valley, and this is my granddaughter, a future kindergartner at Barcelona Elementary School. So, I am here speaking on behalf of the Albuquerque Teachers Federation in strong support of paid sick leave. A short time ago, our union's representatives unanimously voted in favor of paid sick leave. We voted unanimously in favor because we know how important our benefits are, like paid sick leave for our profession and us personally. We also recognize that many of our students come to school sick because their parents or caregivers don't have this benefit. We believe that workers deserve to earn sick time for their labor. They contribute to their jobs and that should be part of their benefits. We understand that workers contribute to a healthy society, therefore, all members of society should have this benefit. We know, and we all know, that healthy kiddos make successful learners. So, please vote in favor of paid sick leave. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Derek Toledo from Hamas, Pueblo, and I'm here to speak in support of the plastic bag and styrofoam ban. Simply stated, this ban, this movement is inevitable. Many other places in the world, even across, even around the globe, are seeking similar solutions because the pollution that the plastic creates is just getting out of control and it's ridiculous. So, I also want to state that I know that change is scary for the smaller and local restaurants, but I can assure you that environmental organizations and coalitions will be there to assist if needed or even requested. I'm a, I'm a Clean Energy Fellow for the Sierra Club and on behalf of our 10,000 members across the state, we support this ban. Thank you.
Gwen Kaitis, Michael Reif, Sidney Vance.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Gwen Kaitis, Policy Coordinator with the New Mexico Coalition Against Domestic Violence. I'm here in support of paid sick leave for victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and stalking, which is a critical factor in whether a victim leaves his or her abuser. Studies indicate that one of the best predictors of whether a victim will separate from her abuser is the victim's degree of economic independence. However, domestic and sexual violence can jeopardize a victim's ability to keep a job. Between one-quarter and one-half of domestic violence victims report that they have lost a job due at least in part to domestic violence. Victims need time for court appearances, obtaining legal assistance, medical assistance, counseling, meeting with advocates or attorneys, finding a new place to live, arranging transportation, child care, and a host of other things, which leads to attendance issues at work if there's no paid leave for them. Without leave and other supports, it can be too difficult for survivors to manage the many issues in play in their lives. Without job security and a paycheck, victims simply cannot afford to leave an abuser. Job protections, including paid sick leave, can assist victims escape abusive situations, allow them to provide for and protect themselves and their children, and help employers keep the workplace safe and productive. For employers, it leads to incre, increased productivity and reduces turnover rates. Thank you.
Sidney Vance, Morgan Cooper, Emily Watkins, Penelope Cement.
Thank you for having me today. Hi, my name is Sidney Vance. I am in sixth grade at Jefferson Middle School, and I support the plastic bag ban because one person uses around 185 pounds of plastic per year. And most of this is because of plastic bags. Even though plastic bags don't weigh that much, the, the weights can add up really quickly when you're using so many plastic bags. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, thank you for having me. My name is Morgan Judkins Cooper. I'm a sixth grader at Jefferson Middle School, and I support the plastic bag ban. A regular plastic bag is used for about 12 minutes but take 1,000 years to decompose. What is even worse is that about 2 million plastic bags are being used each minute. This problem is on our hands. The future may not be written in stone, but if we're not careful, it may be written in plastic. These are only a few reasons that I support the plastic bag ban. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Emily Watkins. I'm a sixth grader at Jefferson Middle School, and I support the plastic bag ban. Plastic pollution is slowly rotting our earth, among many other things. It is killing our marine life and ruining our world. Still, we use plastic bags all the time, not even thinking about the consequences. But today, we can stop this and we shouldn't let the chance pass by. Plastic pollution is a very big issue, but the solution to plastic pollution starts with our county refusing plastic bags.
Madam Chair, members of the Commissionary, Commissioners, thank you for having me. I am, I support the plastic bag ban. It is one of the many contributors to plastic pollution, along with plastic utensils. We recently did a project that directly affects the county landfill. We want to bring awareness of the massive amount of waste caused by our school's disposable So, there are about 84,000 students within the APS community, and they serve 41,000 lunches and 29,000 breakfasts each day. And, and each meal comes with two plastic utensils. So, which is, which equals 140,000 utensils per day times 180 school days in the year. That comes out to about 25 million utensils per year. That's the size of two freight containers of plastic forks that goes into the landfill fill every year. And this has been going on for a while, and we just like to bring awareness to this issue. Thank you.
Before you leave, I just want to say thank you for being here, and I have read about your efforts to ban plastic serving ware, so I just want to say thank you for that effort. It's really cool and I really applaud your work on that and again, want to thank you for coming to talk to us tonight.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you very much for all of you, all you do. My name is Michael Reif. I'm with the New Mexico Roofing Contractors Association. We wanted, again, thank you for bringing such a challenging issue back to the community. The employers in the roofing industry as businesspeople recognize that employee health and safety is a priority. Recently, the roofing industry and other industries have been working hard to make our industries more competitively attractive to potential employees by working toward and supporting substantial increases in public works wages specifically for roofers and for many other trades. We currently support achieving rates in the excess of three times the state minimum wages as well as it will stand in the coming years. However, unfortunately, currently, we're a little bit behind the ball on this one and we would like to have some more opportunity to spend some time talking with you all about how this potential paid sick leave ordinance could impact the, the county. Really specifically, there was a couple of questions that we had. Some of our members, as they were reading through this hastily in the last day and a half, recognized that they aren't certain whether this is only for the incorporation, unincorporated sections of Bernalillo County or if it's for the whole county. Wanted to recognize that it allows 56, that companies who already allow more than 56 hours would potentially, the way we read it, be challenged in trying to manage and maintain their documentation of their workers' attendance records, which they currently don't have to do and they're already paying more. So, basically, what we want to do is stand along with Lynn Anderson of NAOP, Larry Sontag of New Mexico Business Coalition, David Penya with ACI, and Paul Gessing of the Rio Grande Foundation, as well as J.D. Bullington.
Foundation, as well as J.D. Bullington of ACC, and state that we would really like the opportunity to spend some time working on this potential ordinance with you all before it goes, before a vote. Thank you very much for your time and thank you for all you do for our county.
Jose Valenzuela, Ted Nemenski, and Terry Riley.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Thank you for letting me speak today. I'm just going to tell you a little bit about my story. I was a parent, single parent, raising two daughters. I worked in the grocery business for thirty-three and a half years as a produce manager. I would come to work sick because I couldn't afford to take the time off because I was sick. I had to support my daughters. That's why I really support you guys for this paid sick leave. It's important for everybody out there. I feel that everybody needs it. It's especially for these single parents, for parents out there in general. You know, we're here to feel that sick leave is important, and I appreciate you supporting this.
My name is Ted Nemenski, and what I'd like to talk today about illegal immigration and money into illegal immigration support. Illegal immigration, hundred thousand dollars by the Bernalillo County. Well, let's go a little bit back, give you some background. Do you know how, let me ask you, do you know what takes from Europe immigrate to United States? I guarantee it's not easy, like here from Mexico to United States, cross the border. You have to wait also months to get your paper check and so on. Now, let's go. Last week, city councilor Democrat approved quarter million dollar to this project. Now, here, Bernalillo County, who approved, excuse me, who approved, who approved, my question is, who approved hundred thousand? Board of Finance, Board of Commissioners, or none of above, as I understand? How about this, how about quarter of the million? None above either? That's the county job. What kind county doing? Now, who write the check and sign the check? Of course, county treasurer to peanuts, butter, and jelly. Anybody knows what's going on? Maybe state attorney should know. Thank you.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Terry Riley. I'm a member of Veterans for Peace, and an issue to the world is the balance of the economies, and the plastic ban is going to help save our country, our world. The argument that it's going to cost businesses, which is going to end up having to be passed on, at least we'll still have a world. I think that is worth the cost. I would also like to support individually the minimum wage, excuse me, the time off bill, because my wife and I, my wife had two children, I had two children. We raised four boys. My wife had a job that gave time off. If we had not had that, she would have lost her job several times over. Four kids is alone. We made it because she had the good employers. Thank you very much.
And that concludes public comment.
Say thank you to everyone who came tonight for public comment. We are going to take about a ten-minute break before we move on to our action items. So, that would put us at seven o'clock. So, we will just take a short break and be back here at seven.